Good evening, everybody. Good evening, good evening. We're going to start the agenda portion of the meeting tonight, February 18th, 2015. We have no ordinances on second reading. Orders is on first reading. 501, in order to amend and supplement the revised general order for the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicapped Persons. Add two handicap parking zones and delete two handicap parking zones. 502, in order to amend and supplement the revised general order for the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic Safety, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas and two time limit parking areas on Van Dyke Avenue. 503, amended management salary ordinance, 2015, 2015 to 2017. Resolutions. 529, approved agenda amendments. 530, approved payroll. 531, authorized refund from the D tax income certificates. 532, authorized professional service agreement to Bridgewater Veterinary Hospital for veterinarian services for the K-9 unit for the police department. The term is 12-month period commencing January 1st, 2015, and ending December 31st, 2015. Not to exceed 3,800, not pro cum. 533, approved amendment resolution R-011446. Reason, additional $3,244.28 to pay final bills for the police department with U.S. Health Works Medical Group of New Jersey, PC, for physician services in 2014. Not to exceed 3,243.28. 534, memorial resolution for the Honorable E. Ronald Wright, JMC, retired. 535, approved amendment of resolution R-011570. Reason, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $4,042 to Lawrence Bimman Esquire for Police Officer Daniel Mazzon in the matter of the most senior of the boroughs, City of New Brunswick, from $11,675 to $16,095. 536, approved amendment of resolution R-111457. Reason, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,0946.50 to Lawrence Bimman Esquire for Detective Christopher Borheimer in the matter of Rodriguez for City of New Brunswick, from $8,661.50 to $10,608. 537, approved request for use of city property requested by Messiah Church of God for singing with music and preaching. Location is War Memorial Park, Saturday, June 27th, 2015, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturday, August 15th, 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Location is Feaston Park. Day is Saturday, July 18th, 2015, 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. 538, approved request for street closing requested by Rutgers Police Department for Rutgers Day, Saturday, April 25th, 1:15. Location is Hamilton Street between College Avenue and George Street. Time is 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Location, Senior Street, College Avenue, Seminary Place, Hamilton Street. Time is 9:30 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. Police extra duty. 539, approved resolution for New Brunswick Civic League for congratulatory 78th anniversary. 540, approved amendment of resolution R-121407. Reason, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $2,066 to $35 to Mickstner and Mickstner. Police Officer Brad Fadel in the matter of the lowest, first police officer Brad Fadel from $18,074. 540 to $21,417.5. 541, approved emergency temporary appropriations for 2015. 542, approved amendment of resolution R-031445. Reason, additional $10725 to pay final bills for the police department with Abruzzi, McDermott, Maslow, and Murphy for special counsel for the police department, not to exceed $1725. 543, authorized award of professional service agreement with Arthur R. T. Bolt, Jr., Esquire at law firm Abruzzi, McDermott, Maslow, and Murphy for special counsel for the police department for year 2015, not to exceed $15,000, not pro cum. 544, approved award of contract with Sal Electric, Inc. for electrical maintenance and repair services. Term is 12-month period commencing February 12th, 2015, and ending February 18th, 2016, which can be extended on a yearly basis for up to two additional years. Rebid specification number 415-14PR, not to exceed $48,500. 545, approved award of contract with Rock Solid Construction for Charles Street Water and Sewer Main Relocation. Specification number 869-14, not to exceed $245,314. 546, approved rejection of proposal and authorization to prepare new request for proposal for architectural services, masonry repair, and roof replacement at City Hall. 547, approved amendment of resolution R-081480. Reason, additional supplemental services associated with inspection costs and contract administration costs with T&amp;M Associates for professional engineering services for 2014, sanitary sewer cleaning, CCTV inspection. Specification number 855-14RFP, not to exceed $7,800. Approval of this, of these supplemental services will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 548, approved amendment of resolution R-081365. Reason, additional supplemental services associated with the design of the discharge force main installation with T&amp;M Associates for professional engineering services for railroad avenue pump station improvement. Specification number 832-13RFP, not to exceed $4,600. Approval of this, of these supplemental services will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 549, approved amendment of resolution R-101007. Reason, pay final invoice in the amount of $5,1750 for the police department's copy machines with GE Capital Information Tech, which is doing business as Rico USA Incorporated, not to exceed $5,1750. Approval of these supplemental services will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 550, approved amendment of resolution R-111428. Reason, pay balance of invoice of $375 for the Department of Dial and Ride Remote Mobile Radio with Wireless Electronics Incorporated, doing business of wireless communications and electronics, not to exceed $375. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 551, approved payment for emergency procurement, Department of Public Works, for repair to electrical panel at the Department of Public Works to its facilities, movements, moving incorporated, not to exceed $195. Purchase order D-76639. 552, approved payment for emergency procurement, Department of Public Works, for repair of partial collapse in sewer line on Lee Avenue between Handy and Sedan Streets with BMW Construction in New Jersey, not to exceed $24,377. Purpose order D-76058. 553, approved award of contract with Hatchmarket Gardens for traffic engineering design services for traffic signal replacement at Lewis Street and Hamilton Street. Specification number 876-15RFP, not to exceed $26,400. 554, authorized tax collector to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. 555, approved award of contract with Business and Governmental Insurance Agency for insurance brokerage services, prescription program. 12-month period commencing February 1st, 2015, and ending January 31st, 2016, and thereafter for an additional 12 months option. Specification number 424-15RFP, fair and open, none pro cum. 556, authorized lease of copy machine for the police department, division of records from GE Capital Information Tech Solutions, doing business as Rico USA for one Rico mile, 6002SP digital copier system, not to exceed $32548 per month, commencing March 1st, 2015, and ending February 28th, 2019. 48-month contract, state contract numbers A-82709, New Jersey cost per copy. 557, approved amendment of resolution R-081436, change order number 2E. With Chrisit, Chrisit of Romantic E, doing business as KR Masonery LLC for Remsen Avenue Fire Reserve and Community Center. Amount is $5,582. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 558, approved award of contract with Power Plus Translations Incorporated for interpreters for the Department of Plan and Community and Economic Development. Term, 12-month period commencing February 19th, 2015, and ending February 18th, 2016, and thereafter for an additional 12-month option. Specification number 419-15RFP, not to exceed $500, fair and open. 559, approved amendment of resolution R-121449, change order number 3, with Grand State Highway Products for 2014, for us to deliver regulatory signs, in that $1,059552. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 560, approved amendment of resolution R-021557, change order number 1-ER, with Master Craft Island Incorporated for Remsen Avenue Fire Reserve and Community Center, amount $550. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 561, approved payment for emergency procurement, Division of Animal Control, for cattle services for the period November 14th, 2014, December 31st, 2014. With Blumet Cows Incorporated, not to exceed $2,260. Purpose order D-77777. 562, approved renewal of contract with Maxo, Maxor, Maxor Plus Health Limited for prescription plan services. Term is February 1st, 2015, through January 31st, 2016, not to exceed $3,8697, not pro cum. 563, approved on premise raffle, Bingo, at 94 Summer Street for St. Peter's Apostolate Church, days April 17th, 2015. 564, approved on premise raffle at 94 Summer Street for St. Peter's Church, April 17th, 2015. 565, approved on premise raffle at 94 Summer Street for St. Peter's Apostolate Church, April 17th, 2015. Any further discussion? My St. Peter's Street. Okay. Call the meeting board?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Present.
Council President Egan?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the open public meeting act have been complied with and satisfied in that the manual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in Bronx, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your body for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty, and justice for all.
Again, we will have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces and for all our men and women in our forces that have lost their lives in any battle. Thank you. Do we have any minutes in the night? All right. Okay. We have ordinance on first reading. 501, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general order for the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic Safety, 39, Parking Zones for Handicapped Persons. Add two handicap parking zones and delete two handicap parking zones.
Move the ordinance setting down March 4th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 502, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general order for the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas and two time limit parking areas on Van Dyke Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down March 4th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 503, amended management salary ordinance.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, March 4th, as public hearing, same date to be advertised. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Okay, we have resolutions. We have resolutions 529 through resolution 565. Can anybody from the public who is a cop come up and talk on any of the resolutions? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Charles Prattville, New Brunswick. The first one I want to ask about is this 41, the emergency temporary appropriations. Can somebody explain the purpose of it?
Mr. Reddick's here?
He is not.
Yes, please. Go on, go ahead.
The, as you know, we have not introduced the city budget yet nor have adopted it yet. So in that interim period of time, city government has to continue to function. We still have to enter into contracts. So we have what is called a, we initially started the year with a, an appropriation set forward by resolution by the finance officer, and then every succeeding or following council meeting, we add additional money where we need to, to keep the operations going and to, again, enter into long-term contracts. For instance, if you look at 41, the largest number there is 3.1 million for health benefits, and that is to allow us to enter into the contract that's later in the agenda with Maxor Plus for prescription services. It's essentially a temporary budget that gets amended every meeting until we get an adoption.
Thank you. Can you just elaborate on the water utility expense, 1.34 million dollars, with other expenses? What are those?
What number are you asking about?
It's the same, same one.
Okay.
Under other expenses.
It is to cover all of the expenses that we've incurred so far. The largest would have been the chemical awards that we did a meeting or two ago, I believe. But again, it's a, it's a temporary appropriation to keep that office functioning and able to pay its bills as they continue to come in.
Okay. 42, the next one, and 43 for them are the special counsel for the police department. What is the, what is the purpose of retaining that firm?
I'm just going to address the county council president. That, Mr. Tebow of that particular firm is special counsel to the police department and handles all of the police disciplinary matters for the police department. We got a contract last year, $1725 is to pay the balance of what we owe him for last year's services, and the next one, 43, is for the new contract for 2015.
Thank you.
And just forgive me, I'm not clear on who Mr. Tebow represents. He works for the department in handling internal affairs matters or?
He is special counsel to the New Brunswick Police Department handling disciplinary matters on behalf of the city of New Brunswick Police Department.
So, so for instance, disciplinary hearings, or do those happen, or like what kind of work is being done?
Disciplinary charges representing the police department in connection with any disciplinary action taken against any New Brunswick police officer, whatever that may be, time to time.
Okay. And can you just tell me approximately how much was it last year?
$12,000. Actually, with the $1725, we would have paid him $12,170.25.
So this year would be a little more.
Well, a little more we allow for this year.
Thank you. Can I get a timeline now that we have a, a word of the contract on the agenda for the Charles Street Water and Sewer Main Relocation? Is there approximately when it'll start and be finished?
This is 545.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Goulden or Mr. Warrick?
I would ask Mr. Goulden if he could speak for that.
After the award, we will establish a, set up a pre-construction conference within the next month. Shortly thereafter, we would issue a notice to proceed, and I believe the duration of the contract is six months. It should be done by default. Thank you all.
Terrific. I hope it's successful. Then, then next one, 546, the architectural services, masonry repairs. I guess that's, is that the roof up here or the roof above it? Or is it all the same?
It's all the same. Both roofs, the flat and the gable pitched roof.
Okay. And I guess the bid is being rejected. Can you tell me why?
Yes, we received one bid for $75,000 from an architectural firm in South Jersey. We just thought that was uncompetitive. At least that was Tom Goulden's recommendation to me. I agree with that. So we're looking to turn this around again very quickly and see if we can get multiple bids in a more competitive situation.
So it's, when you say not competitive, the bid was too high? It was too expensive?
It was more than, more than we expected.
Okay. And, okay, one more I want to ask about 555, the Business and Governmental Insurance Agency. Can you give me just the basic details of this? Did I hear the contract is $3.1 million, or is that different?
That's different.
So then we're going to be asking about?
Okay, what, what's the value of this one?
BGIA, we'll call them that for short. They are the broker of record for the prescription plan. They are the incumbent. We did do a parent open, reviewed multiple proposals. They came in, the cheapest, their fee is worth $22,000 against a $3 million contract. They're paid directly by the carrier. Nonetheless, we have to express by resolution the relationship between the parties.
Thank you.
And so can you tell me how many bids were, were received?
Yeah, 10. I believe it's three.
And also just approximately how long have you been doing business with this agency?
I'll go back and correct myself. There were four bids. We have been doing business with BGIA in some fashion for, I'd say, later, longer than 10 years.
And, thanks. I have other resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prattville. Anybody else have resolutions this evening? Anybody else? You bring the council, Mr. Copeland? See nothing?
Move the resolutions?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Thank you. Move the, anybody with a council to discuss anything? Okay, public discussion. Anybody wish to address the council at this time? Please come on up to the microphone and make your name and address. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Once again, Charles Prattville, New Brunswick. I'll, I'll start with an easy, a very simple, straightforward question for you, Mr. Council President. Would you be willing to sit down with me for a interview?
Can we talk about it after the meeting or what?
I, I mean, the question's been asked, like, it's a simple question.
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. So have you done any interviews with any journalists since you've been the council president?
No, sir.
Okay. And you said at the last meeting that you, you don't respond to emails. You don't, you don't respond to emails and you don't do interviews. So what do you do?
Mr. Prattville, I'm not up here to be interviewed by you this evening, okay, buddy? So do you have any business in the city that you'd like to discuss or anything, or you just want to talk to me? If you want to talk to me, you're wasting everybody's time to talk after the meeting.
Sure, I just?
I told you why I didn't want to do an interview. I don't want to bring it up here, you know, but can we just move on with something more constructive maybe? You know, is there any street lights out or something we can help you with? Are you not happy with the snow plowing? You know, something a little more constructive here instead of wondering what I'm feeling.
Well, I'll be honest, I expect more from my elected officials. I've asked you multiple times after the meetings. I come up to you, I'm very polite, and I ask you, please, could you sit down?
I have no problem, I have no problem if you want, at all, Charlie. I mean, it's nothing to do with anything, you know? I, I don't agree with some of your journalism, you know? I can get a lot of things wrong and incorrect, but I, I have no problem talking to you. I have no problem with you at all.
Well, well then why won't you just sit down with me for an interview? The mayor does it, he's an elected official.
He's, he's, he's the mayor. We can, that's, that's his choice. We can do what he wants to do. Do you want to interview anybody else on the council or just me?
Of course I do. You're just the president, I start with you.
Okay. Did you, did you interview the last president?
I, I tried, it didn't work out, but?
Okay.
I, I just think it's appalling that we have a council and nobody does interviews with the press.
Okay.
We've got a city of 15,000, 60,000 people here, and you haven't done one interview, and you say openly that you don't respond to?
You wanted to ask, and I wasn't to do with you, then you, then you made a whole blunder in reporting things about me that are, that are pretty much incorrect and I don't agree with. So that's just the way it is right now.
Okay, could you please elaborate on the blunder?
I talked about it, I talked about it with you before.
Yeah, because I don't think it's fair to say it's a blunder. I'm pretty sure I accurately portrayed?
Listen, we'll agree, listen, you have your opinion, I have my opinion. I have no hard feelings with you at all. So I'm not saying I'm never going to have to do an interview with you. I just said not at this time. I never said the word never.
Okay, it just hasn't happened yet, and?
I know.
I've, I've asked many times, and you give me always a noncommittal answer, so I figured I, I got to ask in front of everybody so that they can see that you're not willing to do that.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to speak about the Ethics Board. Can anybody tell me why, if you go downstairs, you can see they are supposed to have a meeting on February 12th, but for everybody who showed up, there was, the doors were locked and there's no meeting?
Okay, who can help me out with that?
I'm not sure, excuse me, why the meeting was canceled, but I, I did find out that the meeting was canceled. That was a previously scheduled meeting at the beginning of the year. As Mr. Prattville knows, the Ethics Board had met, I believe, maybe a week or two before on his matter, and the Ethics Board can meet when the Ethics Board wants to meet, but I, I wasn't at that prior meeting. My understanding, they decided not to meet on that previously scheduled day, which is a quarterly leading schedule that they generally set at the beginning of the year. So my understanding, they're trying to schedule a, another meeting for the beginning of March. I'm sure once that's been finalized, that will be made public, and Mr. Prattville can come to that meeting if you would say?
Thank you, Mr. Shammy.
Okay, well, this is now the second time in less than a year that the board has not shown up for meetings that's been advertised. And you know this is something I've brought up about other boards, that you're essentially misleading the public when you claim to be having meetings on a regular basis, and then you, the people actually don't show up, they don't do the job.
They asked you this question, when you went to the room where the meeting was, was there a sign there that said, "Meeting has been canceled" or anything? Was there?
No, the building was locked, I could not get in the building.
There should definitely be, I, I think, that there should be some type of sign saying, "Meeting is canceled for the season," so the public, and I think if that happens the next time, we should, we should be doing that.
And better yet, it should be taken off the website and replaced with a notice that it's canceled, so people don't go out of their way to come.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, well, thank you. I hope that that never happens again, because it's, it's really, you know, a waste of money.
Yes, Mr. Warrick.
I can't speak entirely to the matter, but the 12th, we were closed for a holiday. It's possible that someone who established the meeting schedule for the Ethics Board did not anticipate that.
Right.
So we apologize for any inconvenience. The City Hall was closed that day for Lincoln's birthday, I believe.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the apology, and if I could just ask, Mr. Shammy, is it possible, you can ask Mr. Shammy to, to let me know when that meeting is scheduled?
Sure, Mr. Shammy, we have no problem to get that to you.
Great, I just don't want it to happen and me to miss it. The Ethics Board also has another matter that is in, in the process of moving forward. Mr. Shabazz brought serious allegations against Ms. Gayden and Mr., the, the former judge Hoffman. Can you tell me what the status of that matter is?
I don't have?
I believe that's the purpose of the next meeting, perhaps that will be agendized at the next meeting, but I'm not counsel to the Ethics Board, but I suspect that's the next order of business.
Okay. Is it true there was a water main break today in downtown?
Was there a water main break today, anybody?
There was one yesterday, I don't know about today.
Can you stand up and answer, please?
Yes, there was one on New Street here, in front of 120.
Why weren't you there?
Yeah, there, there was a, a main break that was identified yesterday over at New Street. We had a more pressing water main break that we addressed yesterday over on 277 George, actually on Morris. So today, we, we went over to New Street to pick up where we left off yesterday.
Thank you.
And so was water service affected to nearby buildings?
Was any water service affected?
161 New Street.
161.
I just, I, I heard from Rutgers that they were telling people in their building, I think the Livingston Avenue Building, 33 Livingston, not to drink the water. And it concerns me that the city didn't put out any kind of similar notice. If Rutgers is telling people not to drink the water in their building, why wasn't an alert put out to the rest of?
Well, how do you know? How do you know? Well, how do you know Rutgers was right in their response to the water?
It's possible Rutgers is wrong.
Was there anything wrong, excuse me, was there anything wrong, director? Was there anything wrong with the water?
It was actually just the service to 161 New Street.
Did it affect that he drank water in the area?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Thank you.
Okay, I do believe it affected traffic though, so at the very least, it deserves an alert on the NICSIL system to let people know to avoid the area, just to keep the smooth flow of traffic. So I think that, you know, we dropped the ball there, missed that one. And we should have a policy, as I've said before, on when to use the NICSIL system and when not to. And I think something like that deserves the NICSIL system being used. I also want to express concerns about the loud announcements that the New Brunswick Police were making for people to move their cars very late at night. Can somebody tell me why those announcements were made at 11:00 PM, midnight, 1:00 AM?
Well, it's obvious. So what do you mean, they were driving in that police vehicle on a loudspeaker, making announcements?
Sirens and-
Was it to get the cars off the road for the snow?
Yeah.
Is that, yes.
One minute.
Oh, okay. So that's the reason why they were doing it?
Right, why didn't they do it earlier, in the night, you know, like 8:00 PM or 7:00 PM? We can't control when it snows, as you know, Oregon says, once the road is snow-covered, then cars should be removed for the snow emergency roads. If we do it too early, people wouldn't react to it because it wasn't even snowing yet. We coordinate with Public Works, watch the radar. When Mother Nature decides to move the clouds in and start snowing, then we make the announcements. I think, I can say this, we have received no complaints except for Mr. Cradwell without the announcements. People are much happier to come out and move their cars and find their car and take it in tow in the morning.
Thank you, Captain.
I think some of the families probably were not happy to be woken up, in my neighborhood at least.
So Louis, are you thinking for them or you know for sure? Because I don't know how to stand up in court. You've got feelings for them or you know for sure that they weren't happy?
The people in my house were not happy.
Okay.
I think it's ridiculous. The city made the decision at 8:00 PM or 8:00, 8:35 PM to do that. And then they waited almost, you know, more than three hours for some areas to get notified.
Guess what would happen?
I remember about three or four years ago, we dealt with the same thing. I was in the audience there. And they, people were complaining that they weren't born and they got up in their cars and towed. So what would they have rather had? I mean, like I said, I didn't get any complaints. And for you to say that, okay, people in your house, you know, people in your house complain, what would they have rather had? You know what I'm saying? Snow became covered, you have to move your car. So they got airborne, and they got airborne to move their car. You know, I mean, I'll do, like I said, I mean, but if they, I feel like if it was such an issue, they could report into here, you know, saying, you know, why did you wake us up at that time of night? What happened? But you're speculating right now that that was an unreasonable time of night. I don't understand that.
I've made it clear that if they had done it at 8:30 PM, that would have been acceptable. That's what we wanted.
Well, I think they started earlier. Didn't they start earlier? I don't know if they started right at 10:00. I think some streets might have started earlier.
It didn't start snowing until after midnight. It's premature to go out there at eight o'clock. There were decisions made to prepare with the decks and where people depart. But to tell people to move their cars when the snow was still five hours away, it's premature.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Cradwell?
Yes, I'd like to ask how many murders there were. Last year, there were four, but there was also the case of Mr. Jackson.
Sorry, what did you want to do where?
There were four murders last year, but Mr. Jackson, can you confirm that Mr. Jackson died after being beat up, after being assaulted?
Captain?
Was Mr. Jackson? Andrew Jackson, I believe, that came up at a council meeting last year. And I think, and if it's the same Andrew Jackson that we're talking about, who was explained to later, it is not a homicide. He died in a homicide. I didn't ask if it was a homicide. Was he assaulted? Was he a victim of assault? I do not know. Doesn't know, sir. Okay, well, man law is like things worth looking into. And I guess I'll just finish by telling everybody where to find the corruption next. It is at the Rent Control Board on the 24th, right here in this room, where the newest crony of the administration will be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Cradwell.
It's no kidding, 2900, Mr. Cradwell.
First of all, I have a question. Captain Miller said that Andrew Jackson's death wasn't a homicide, but he don't know the reason that, the reason why he's dead. So it wasn't a homicide, what was it?
I do not know the detail, but I'd have to go back. This is something discussed at the beginning earlier last year. I do not remember the details. I know it was not a homicide when it came up. I know the four homicides that we had last year, all four, which are solved, not reported differently in Mr. Cradwell's blog where he said that we're two homicideers. All four homicides are solved. Everyone's been arrested. As far as Mr. Jackson, it is not a homicide. I am not sure what led up to his death, if it was suspicious, not suspicious. I can look into it and report back at the next meeting, but I do not know.
Thank you, can you do that, please, Captain?
So my question is, if he was, you know, ultimately assaulted and that led to his injuries, you know, ultimately having him, him ultimately dying after him being assaulted, then that's, is that not considered a homicide? Because he's saying he doesn't know if he was assaulted or not. But he is confirming that it's not a homicide. So it's like, you know, he's trying, I don't know-
Why don't we wait till he gets more details to refresh his memory? Maybe he's misspe, maybe he's misspoken and he wants to get the right information so we all have the right information.
Okay. Say, for instance, if that information comes back that he was assaulted and ultimately killed, then that's the neglect on behalf of the New Brunswick Police Department because it's almost over a year now. And if he's, if, because he was kind of unsure when, because I brought Andrew Jackson's name up. He was kind of unsure a year ago. He didn't really know what was going on then, and he gave the same type of answer. So now, you fast forward a year, if he confirmed, if he would have did his due diligence back then, we probably could have got to the bottom of it. Obviously, he still didn't get to the bottom of it because he's given the same answer a year, a year later. And wait, hold on.
Sure.
And if he's given the same answer a year later and it turns out that he was assaulted and ultimately died from those injuries, then now we have a cold case that could have been. Now, looking for witnesses in a situation like that is almost impossible now.
Okay, he wants, yes, Captain?
The question asked last year, was it homicide? Just as it was asked again. The answer is no. I do not know every detail of that case. The key thing that Mr. Pittman just said is, if, he's just speculating. If I come back next, in two weeks, and report that his injuries were, the assault led to his death, then yes, it would be open as a cold case, but I do not believe that to be the facts. I believe there's other facts. You ask me, is he assaulted? I do not know. Just because he was assaulted doesn't mean it led to his death. And again, now I'm speculating, so there's no need for any of us to speculate here. Let's get the facts and discuss it.
Okay, so let's move on from Mr. Jackson until we get a more new answer or ready answers.
I just appreciate if he didn't did that a year ago. I have a straight court question for you guys. Are police designed to serve and protect the community or create revenue for the administration? This is flat out, yes, you know, it's one or the other. Are they, are they here to protect the people? Could you consider protecting the administration also? Are they here to serve and protect the people? Are they here to create revenue for the administration of New Brunswick?
Do you hear to serve and protect the people?
They're here to serve and protect the people?
Yes.
Okay, that's my belief. Could you ask an officer?
It's my way of doing it.
Captain?
I'm here to serve and protect the people.
Is every officer here to serve and protect the people and not create revenue for the administration?
I, obviously, you know, Mr. Pittman, I can't answer for everybody. I would hope, I would hope that they all are on the same page as Captain Miller and myself and the rest of the council. I think I can speak for probably everybody up here.
Okay. What if they're not on the same page as Captain Miller?
I don't know how to answer.
You just throw your hands up?
No, I just don't know how to answer that. What do you mean, what if they're not? I'm sure that we're disciplined if you're not doing your jobs correctly.
No, no, what if they're hired? What if an officer is hired to fill the courtroom of 26th and Patrick Street? That's his sole purpose and not to provide a quality of life for the community?
That's a big what if, Mr. Pittman.
No, we can get to-
That would have to be true there for anybody.
Okay, well, we can get to the bottom of it. I don't never like to bring personal situations up that I did. Normally, nine times out of ten, when I come to these microphones, it's for somebody else. Fortunately, it had to be here for me. Now, that's a good thing and a bad thing. Bad thing is, I don't mind, you know, I can defend myself outside of here. The good thing is, me doing, going through a situation, I know firsthand how I was dealt with. And I know when the going gets tough that I'm not going to back out. There's a lot of people I bring into these microphones and you notice they don't never come back. Because somewhere, they get scared or they just, they have somebody threaten them or just give them a funny look and they never come back. Whereas behind, I'm coming back.
You can come back every two weeks. I don't think anybody has problems.
My problem is, I ran into a situation with a police officer. Goes by name of Miguel Chang. Don't know the officer.
I didn't hear his last name. What is it?
Chang.
Chang?
Yes. Don't know the officer, never had any run-ins with him, never spoke to him. I don't, don't know him whatsoever. And actually, I was coming from a driveway. It was on the 27th of January. I don't know, you're familiar with it.
Absolutely.
It's on the 27th of January. And I'm coming from, coming down the driveway and he pulled this police car in front of me. In front of me. Across the street was my vehicle, my pickup truck, which I had the hood up. And he asked me, you know, he was ultimately going to pass me. He stopped, looked in my face. I don't know if he knows me or not. He asked me, was that my truck? I said, yeah, it's my truck. He said, are you working on your truck? I said, no, I'm not working on a truck. Originally, what I was doing was, I was driving, I was coming down Route 27. And, you know, if you know the 27th of January, it was a snowstorm. So I was coming down and sometimes, I don't know if it ever happens to you, when you're driving, your actual windshield's like dusted up and it get like salty or something, you can't see. So you press the washer fluid, I'm pressing the washer fluid and it's not coming out. Pull over to a friend's house and I lift the hood and say, all right, low washer fluid. Went to check and see if he had washer fluid coming back to my car. Officer Chang is coming down Flott Street. Asked me, is that your car? I said, is it your vehicle? I said, yes, it's my truck. He said, are you working on your truck? I said, no, I'm not. He said, that's your truck? Yeah. The hood up? Yeah. Are you working on your truck? I said, no, I'm not. He said, I'm going to ask you one more time. Are you working on your truck? I said, I'm going to tell you one more time. I'm not working on my truck. He said, you know what, I'm going to tow your truck. He swings around, gets behind me, ultimately, you know? He never exited the truck since then, you know? He just had an angry demeanor, as if he didn't like me. He didn't, he couldn't stand me. And I've never had any issues with this officer whatsoever. And that scares me. One, does he not like me? Does he know me? I don't, I don't know if he knows me, but does he not like me or my complexion? I don't know. This officer's demeanor was as if he hated me. And to actually try, you know, he gave me four tickets. He gave me tickets, you know, and, you know, the tickets, I'll fight in court. My thing is, you know, these officers riding around patrolling with that type of hatred and that type of, I don't know, aggression. Thank God that it was just me didn't move my washer, my washer fluid. Imagine that officer coming to a call with a person that has a gun, a firearm, and he's already aggressive. Imagine that officer coming to a total different call with that type of aggression. How things can get escalated. Now, he looks like he's a fairly new officer. So whoever trained him, either they didn't, either they didn't get to him and he already had that type of attitude or they trained him to have that type of attitude. This-
I just have one question.
Okay.
This is the truck that when the windshield wiper wasn't, the fluid wasn't working, right?
Yes.
So I'm just asking, why, so when he asks you if you're working on the truck, why didn't he say, why didn't you tell him?
I'm not working on the truck.
But why didn't he say, yeah, I have trouble with my windshield wiper fluid? Maybe he would have took, maybe he would have said, okay, he understands why you pulled over and he wouldn't have did any of those things. I'm just asking.
For one, he was ultimately going to pass me. He looked at me and stopped and then he questioned me. Two, I'm not working on the truck. Working on your truck is, I didn't have any tools in my hand?
I understand the technical aspect of the question. I mean, why did he just say my windshield wipers weren't working? I couldn't see, that's why I pulled over. Now, I couldn't, I, that's why I was scared I was going to hit somebody because I couldn't see. I, my windows were, that happens all the time. I know exactly what you're talking about. My wife always wants me to get a windshield fluid because she can't see because of the dust you were just-
Why do I have to say, I'm not even at the truck? Why do I have to explain myself to her?
Because he's a police officer and he just wanted to know why the vehicle was there.
No, he didn't. He wanted to intimidate, y'all was there. Don't make an excuse for him.
I'm not making excuses for him. It just seems like-
And if you're familiar with the ordinance, you have up until an hour to work on your vehicle in the city of New Brunswick. You can change a tire, you can jump your car, you can put windshield wiper-
I agree.
He should have known that then. So he's giving me, he's taking it me for ordinance that he's not even familiar with. So that, that's why I asked the initial question. Is these officers here to increase the quality of life or to create revenue for the administration? Because during that stop, what I did was had a supervisor come along, come present. Mr. Chang already wrote the tickets. He already wrote the tickets. I had a supervisor come along and I explained to him the situation. He never mentioned anything about where my truck was parked.
What was his name, the supervisor?
Sergeant Boba D.. Yes. And what was upsetting to me was, I asked him, do he agree with the tickets? And he said he didn't agree with the tickets. He's like, I don't understand this ticket. Got recorded. He said, I don't, I don't understand this ticket. But he said, what you have to do is, you just take it to court and you tell the prosecutor. That proves that he could write any type of ticket he wants and just long as you, you know what the officer's response is? His supervisor's response to me was, you know what, just go, what if I don't want to go to court? What if I wanted that settled right then and there? Why do I have to go to court? And why do I have to deal with a judge and have to deal with, talk to a prosecutor and possibly speak to an attorney and have a lawyer present? Which, you know, all attorneys, what's funny to me is, why are all the attorneys in the business district of New Brunswick? They didn't create business. All the prosecutors and attorneys are in the business district of New Brunswick. And to me, I feel like their sole purpose is to create, police officers are creating revenue for this city. And I feel like personally, I am a victim of it. And my thing is this, if you would like to, I mean, maybe you don't want to sit down at the truck. You can sit down with me and we can do a study to get to the bottom of it. I'm either right or I'm wrong. I'm either right or wrong. There's no, there's no gray area with this. Either the police officer's job is to increase the quality of life of people or their job is to create revenue for the administration. There's no right, there's no, there's no gray area here. And if you're willing to sit down with me and we conduct this study and we, you know, we do some research and find out whether I'm right. Alex, if I'm wrong, I'll come in and I'll say, you know what, I was wrong. But if I'm right, I would like you to address that I'm right and change the problem. Fix the problem. Are you willing to do that?
Not at this time, Mr. Pittman.
Why not?
How much time does Mr. Pittman have left?
He already ran out. And he's-
Anything else, Mr. Pippin?
Let's see what else one has.
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Anthony Everianino, I'm from New Brunswick. And I'm here tonight as a member of Black Lives Matter, the Rutgers University chapter. And so, in 2011, following the tragic death of Barry Deloche, Maricay Hill made a commitment to ease public tensions between the police and its citizens. In line with this goal, this has been appointed an attorney to act as a liaison between citizens and the police. And as far as I understand, had mandated a public, a public monthly report of complaints filed against the department and individuals in the department. For Black Lives Matter at Rutgers, and for many Rutgers citizens, as we've heard tonight, this isn't, this is only the first step towards a solution to this problem. For many pragmatic reasons, such as people having the workload of forty hours a week to support their families, or people being circumstantially uneducated or disengaged from the political and judicial system, this information is not easily accessible for them. Furthermore, the results of these complaints are very unclear and not easily accessed, uh, accessed by the general public. The result of this is a largely one-sided and empty conversation where the people, the community, don't feel represented. And as the issue of police brutality and contentious relationships between, in, uh, police departments and communities becomes a national issue, it's still within the state's and the municipality's power to do something about that and solve that problem. For these reasons, in the next several months, Rutgers University Chapter of Black Lives Matter will be running a massive voter registration drive and a political education drive for the people of New Brunswick. We will also be working on constructing a ballot initiative that will propose a review board that is partially constituted of civilians elected from the community. And this is dressed as an open invitation to you, the members of the council, and also to the police department, to work with us on this issue, so that we can start building trust between the community and the police. You can count, we'll count on the fact that we'll be in contact with you very soon. But if you want to get in contact with us, our email address is BLMRuckers@gmail.com. You can contact me personally at antrio89@scarletmail.rockers.edu. So, let's not wait until something like what happened in 2011 happens again for us to act on this. To behave in such a way is to be reactionary. So, let's work together as a community to build a more harmonious and safe future for New Brunswick.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council at this time? Same you, huh?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.